I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, January 5th at 7:30. To order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda? Any additions or deletions? I have two, under my report, as it states, we'll have Karen do the audit, and under letter D, order review training, also like to add appointment of alternate because of the training approval. We might as well take care of that at the same time. And any other additions or deletions, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition, appointment of alternate under 20D.
Support.
Motion by trustee board, supported by trustee Churchy. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments? Approval of minutes, 12-1, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Sheriff report, we should have copy of the, latest was the November report, 2014. Pardon?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir. I have, I have one minute if you need to look at it. Fire department report. Chief?
Give me everybody, just a couple items more for, they're all covered in my report, is more for the residents. Couple items, fire department was notified last month from the state of Michigan then. We received a grant through the DNR, little over $1,600. It's a smaller grant, but it'll pay for a new fire hose, as well as some additional fire gloves for the department, so that was, we haven't received the DNR grant in about seven years, so that was, that was a real nice, nice letter to receive. Second, I did submit last month also, a 22-page grant to the federal government, grant request, requested $250,000 for the replacement of rescue tube, which is now 20 years old. And all we can do is hope, and we won't know for several months where we're at, but December 5th was, was the deadline. And the final thing I have is that firefighter's association held our annual shop at the hero program last month before Christmas, and with the help with a lot of volunteers, a lot of support from community businesses, as well as pine tree acres, and help with a lot of people, we were able to take 105 unapprovedless children on a hundred dollar shopping spree at the local buyer, so it was a very successful one for us. The rest of, everything else is covered in my report that I request that you receive and file. If there are any questions?
I just noticed there's quite a few calls in station two lately.
Yes, it has been a busy month at the north end. It really has, so. In fact, all over, since we started the new year, it's been real busy. So, we were over in Iver Township Saturday night for four and a half hours under structural fire with the crew, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you. EMS report, Troy.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Um, we just want to make a quick announcement, I did send out a report to the board late the day after we finished compiling the December numbers, it should be on your email. Don't know if you had the chance to review it before the meeting, but if not, certainly as always, just give me a call after you receive that or have had a chance to review it. Just like to remind everybody, we have a blood drive tomorrow evening, or tomorrow afternoon evening, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM at the Richmond Township Hall at school section of M19. Just again, as I mentioned, for the folks in the audience tonight, the EMS took delivery on December 23rd of new ambulance. The new advanced life support vehicle was built in Jefferson, North Carolina by American Emergency Vehicles at a cost of $146,000. So, that vehicle was placed in service about, just about 24 hours after we received it. We were able to do everything in-house to the vehicle, as far as switching over equipment, including with having Rob Miller on staff, who's real familiar with the radio equipment, installing all the radios and computers. And like I say, he completed that in about 24 hours, with about a seven hour sleep break in there to get the vehicle operating and in service. When we're replacing a vehicle, it's a little different than getting one new, because during the process of your changeover, you have that one up service, so the importance of getting it done quickly is, is, is important, so we have enough vehicles in the fleet to handle the call pile. Um, the only other item I'd like to mention while I have the podium is just, the EMS is assisting the Richmond Lions in taking over their hospital equipment supply for wheelchairs, walkers, things like that, that people donate for years. They, and by the way, our local fire department has handled having these items available for, for folks in the community who might need them, whose insurance doesn't pay for them. Like I said, we're going to be working with the Richmond Lions to assist them with their supply. Some of the members have gotten a little older and don't have the interest in maintaining and keeping up the equipment, so we're going to, we're going to be doing that at the EMS on their behalf. One of the things we learned in taking this project down is there was some equipment that really had no value any longer. And so, we've gone through that equipment at this point, and I contacted, just before the holidays, Kathy Klein from Waste Management, and said, you know, we're going to have some equipment that we need, just a place to dispose of. And pine tree acres kind of came right to the table, as they often do in this community, and said, hey, bring it, bring it down, we'll get rid of it for you, and there won't be any charge to the EMS or the Lions club for that. So, while they're here, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to them for, for that contribution. With that, I think that's all I have for work tonight.
Your question?
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, appreciate it. DPW report.
Sir. Good evening.
Evening.
I've distributed my report for the month, I ask that you receive and file, and morning after you answer any questions.
Did you put another hat in your other truck? I caught him shoveling snow without a hat on. In the rain.
It's all right, it's strange right now.
It slid right off.
Any other questions for DPW? Thank you, sir. Phone enforcement report.
There should liquor inspection forms have been turned in for the month of December.
Thank you. Assessing department report? We had a link copy, did everybody receive a copy? Engineers report, Mr. Safe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year. I apologize for sending the report this morning, this is the holidays, and that we're not working for the last three, but Jeanette has hard copies, just in case you didn't get a chance to look at your email. Nothing changed from the last month, just minor updates. Just one thing I want to bring up to the board, I was talking to trustee Boyd earlier, and clerk Keith, about the recreation passport grant that is available through the DNR. I believe there is a 60 grant maximum that we can apply for, for the path we have. And I was just reading Dave's email, the components that he used for the last grant could be recycled for this one. So, my recommendation would be have Dave work on it and submit for the passport recreation grant this year. I believe the deadline is April, but we need to keep the project scope within 60 grand. And we will be available to help if needed. Just a recommendation. Any other questions on the report? I will take otherwise, please receive and file.
On the other half of that, we did apply, mostly though, for grant for path concession stand, bathrooms, and unfortunately, we didn't get it. And I believe the biggest reason was because we don't connect to any other paths that go anywhere else in the county, so that was the biggest thing they were looking for. So, unfortunately, we didn't get that grant, so that's why we started applying for this one, to keep looking forward with that, because there are improvements that need desperately to be made in the park, which is mainly the path. That's correct.
Last year's grant application, the state was focusing on connecting these trailways, and we don't have any connection anywhere, so we did not score high enough to get the grant. I believe the threshold was 320-something, and we came about 80 points lower.
Any other questions for Mr. Safe? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Library report.
I'll read the report. Lennox Township Library closed Monday, January 19, 2015, in observance of the Mark Luther King Jr. Holiday. Library will reopen on Tuesday, January 20, 2015, for regular business. Free Gal is a free music service for libraries offered downloads and streaming for approximately eight million songs. Patrons are allowed five downloads each week. For more information, go to our website at lennoxlibrary.org, and click on the widget for freegal, Lego, I'm sorry, freegal.lego club will resume on Saturday, January 3rd. Registration is required. Gamer Wednesdays will begin on January 7th at 4:30 PM and continue every Wednesday. Come in and play a video game beginning January 2nd. We will conduct an artist of the month program. Participants will display their artwork at the library for judging. Winners will be announced on Thursday, January 29th. Contact the library for more information. Their contact number is 586-749-3430. Senior center report. She did not issue one, Jeanette? Thank you.
I didn't want to write down this, I, okay? Did you want to change it up? It's actually, she changed it up this January, I agree with her. It looks like she's doing one more quarter than that.
We'll have to ask her how she issued that. Supervisors report. 2013-2014 honor report. We have Karen here from Surfer Bay, Whipple.
Ron Sid, my name is Karen Chapeek. I'm from Surfer Bay in Whipple, and I was down here kind of doing your audit this year with another staff member. And I believe each of you have this presentation packet here. It's definitely a short synopsis of what your audit is. We're just going to kind of go through this instead of your 50-page report.
Could you pull that mic up just a little bit, please?
Is that better?
I'll just work you a little bit. Can you hear okay?
Am I too quiet? Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. So, on page one, the only part of your audit that is ours is actually your opinion letter, and you had an unmodified opinion this year again, which is just a clean opinion. It just means that your statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that's really what the state looks for, is an unmodified opinion. The next part in your audit is the management discussion and analysis, and that is required for, to get an unmodified opinion, and it just gives the reader management's views on the audit and the operations and things that have occurred during the year. The next section in your audit is any live financial statements, and that's looking at the township, basically like a business, it includes everything of the township, all your debt, all your assets, everything is included in that. But how townships normally, governments normally look at their financials is on a fund basis, so that's kind of what we'll go through, is just your fund basis statements. So, at June 30th, 2014, the general fund had assets of $2,108,260, liabilities of $72,245, some deferred inclusive resources of $11,396, for a total fund balance at June 30th of $2,024,619. That was a change from last year of $85,441, where you had revenues of $852,489 for the year, and expenses of $937,930. The fund balance of your general fund was split up on page two into different categories. You had some non-spendable fund balance of $36,442, which majority of that is just your prepaid expenses. You had to basically separate those out, because you've already spent the, it's paid, it's an asset, but you can't re-spend it again, because you're going to use it this next year. You also had assigned fund balance of $610,092, and unassigned fund balance of $1,378,085. Looking at your fund balance for the last few years, it has pretty much stayed pretty stable for the last few years, little over $2 million. You also have special revenue funds. You have road fund, fire fund, PTA revenue fund, liquor law enforcement and monitoring fee fund. Your road fund brought in $142,191, and spent $60,336. So, your change in fund balance for that fund was $81,855. The fire fund brought in $483,595, spent $337,396, and had an increase in fund balance of $146,199. Your PTA revenue fund brought in a little over $2.3 million, spent almost $1.1 million for an increase of $1,279,935. Your liquor law enforcement brought in about $3,500, spent $1,500 for a change of close to $2,000, and your monitoring fee fund brought in close to $10,000, spent $10,000 for a decrease of $175. And then looking at the fund balance for each of those funds, your fire fund had $774,600, or sorry, your road fund had $774,686. Your fire fund had $1,816,655. Your PTA revenue fund had $9,246,396, and your liquor law enforcement and monitoring fee had $30,139, and $47,819 respectively. You also have a debt service fund, your charter 20 drain fund, that brought in $38 of revenue and spent $2,588. So, that money fund balance for that was $30,616. Looking on page three, your water supply and sewage disposal system fund, you had operating revenues in that fund of $1,560,443, operating expenses excluding depreciation of $772,928, and then your depreciation expense was $778,424. So, you had operating income in that fund of $9,091. You also had some non-operating revenues this year of, well, the net of revenues and expenses of $456,808, so your increase in your net position in your water and sewer fund was $465,899. Looking down on our number two, it really just kind of shows like what your cash results are for that fund, not totally counting all your payables, receivable changes there, but your operating income was $9,000. We're adding back depreciation on, of that number, because it's really a non-cash transaction there of $778,000. So, operations brought in $787,515. You earned a little bit of interest of close to $8,300. And then with your debt that you have in that fund, you had principal payments of $952,000, interest expense of $1,175,000, and then there was some forgiveness of interest from the federal government of $186,000. You also paid for some capital improvements of $9,000, and you brought in some tap-in fees of close to $1.5 million. So, your net increase in cash in that fund was $292,000 for the year ending June 30th, 2014. Going down to that number three there, your networking capital for that fund at June 30th, you did have a positive networking capital of $1.1 million. There are also some other reports that are included in those packets up there, the independent auditors report on internal control, and the audit communication letter, which we had gone over with management previously. On page four, it just shows breakdown of your revenues in your general fund, and you're really fairly consistent. Looking at this year and last year, you had $35,000, or 35% of your revenues were brought in from taxes, and 46% were brought in by federal and state revenues, which is really the state shared revenues. Last year it was 45%, so you've been fairly consistent the last couple of years. Page five is the breakdown of expenses by function, and the biggest portion of your general fund expenses are paid for general government. There's 86% was, or at the year of June 30th, 2014, and 83% in the previous year. So, again, those expenses are fairly consistent as well. On page six, it's just a graph showing really the breakdown of the balance of, what the fund balance is of your general fund, and as you can see, it is fairly consistent, a little over $2.25 million way back in 2010, and just over $2 million at the end of this If anybody has any questions?
Any questions from Karen? Thank you very much, Karen. Motion to accept treasurer's report as presented. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Okay, so we actually want to do this, if you look at revised.
I have revised.
Hope that's not any, because I don't have this one. The balance that we need to approve is $196,689.24, and you do have that one, I just...
That's the one I have. Everybody else?
I was using another balance. Then you will also have another one that says revised to be approved at the January meeting. This was because the meeting was so early in the month, and there was quite a few after the fair, and so I wanted the rest of them to be approved in the new amount for the minute purposes. That's what the auditors look at. And the total of that one, if you can find that one, is $443,151.95.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised December 1st, a total of $443,151.95. Orders and bills?
It's board. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions, discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy? Aye. Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 5th, 2015 revised orders and bills, a total of $196,689.24.
It's board. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? Deputy clerk, roll call, please, once again.
Churchy? Aye. Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Trustees report, trustee Churchy, please.
Nothing new at this time, just Happy New Year to everybody. Hope the holidays were good.
Thank you, Happy New Year. Trustee Boyd?
Not looking this way.
Thank you. Clerk report, clerk Keith.
I had mentioned last month that we had a recount that was going to be happening shortly. That has taken place, and actually proud to announce that the numbers, the counts that we said were in everything is exactly what it came out to be. The actual recount did have the one candidate gain some, in fact, they both gained a little bit, and that has to do with how the actual balance or how people mark them. Sometimes the machine doesn't pick it all up, so, other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receive and file our reports. Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by clerk Keith. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Unfinished business, repair, replace main copy machine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know you don't have a lot of time to look at these folks. There's three different companies, and there's a lot of different machines.
Can we just do a quick summary too on this, Jeanette, that basically we're faced with a copy machine that's seven years old at this, at this point?
Correct. We purchased it in May of '08 when we came into this building, and from everybody that I've talked to, all these different companies, they all say a lifespan of a copy machine scanner is seven years, and this spring we will be at seven years. We've been very fortunate with this machine, it has... We've been very fortunate with this machine. It has run really well. The last couple of months that we've had a few issues, we've figured them out and it's been running great again. If we do have a problem because it is not under warranty, we would have to charge, find a company, one of these ones here would take care of it. But they would get us for labor and there's no more getting parts for our machine. They don't make them.
And sorry to interrupt, but I guess our biggest concern is if that one goes down, without one, we'd have to get a rental come in or them come in.
Then we'd have to purchase one or rent one like right away because that is our fax machine, that is our main scanner. You know, we do everything with that one. We have two other copy machines in the building, but they're just copy machines and they don't work all that great.
It's the scanning and the fax capability that could be without, which we cannot be without.
Correct.
And that's one of the concerns we have now too, that we should almost consider a backup type system in case it does go down, so we're not without it.
I mean, you have a fax machine in your office, the building department, when we did have an issue where we couldn't fax, they would be using the one in your office and it would work. But.
You said that there's also one in the building department? Two faxes?
No, it's in Ron's office, a portable fax machine.
And that's probably fifty years old?
It's quite old.
Yeah, it's in rough shape, let me tell you. It's not a new unit by any means.
I don't know.
I mean, if I had to guess, I'd probably say it's twenty years old.
I couldn't answer that. It was in the building department before.
Yeah, it's just a small, like four-in-one or something.
Desktop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. These copies, what we have right now is a fifty-page per minute. And all the companies that we talked to said that that is way too much for our building. We don't have that much demand for copying. So we went, we got thirty-five per minute, we did forty per minute, we did forty-five per minute, just to get different pricing. We did black versus color. Color has come way down. Scanning.
Based on your information, what's your recommendation at this time?
Well, all these quotes are good for at least another month. Veronica and I have discussed, we thought we'd like to wait another month and see how the machine is going, how it's working. Now that we're able to track how many copies we're making, before we had no idea how to do that, and now we can.
You have a better understanding of what we actually need than at that point?
Right. If more of our, every desk, every office has a printer that uses those ink jets or laser. Though, when you print to that, you use a lot of ink, especially if you're doing color. But even the black and white is using a lot more ink than if you are working on your computer and you send it to the copy machine. You're saving like fifty percent in ink alone. So if we can get in the habit to print to that, because I've been doing it a lot in the last couple of weeks. And by the time I hit print and then go all the way down there and get it, it's already done. And you get up and exercise at the same time. So, you know, this is a nice feature to do if you're doing more than like five pages. If you're doing just one or two, it's not a big deal. If you're doing, you know, a booklet or more than a few, it's.
Any type of volume that you have, the cost is under to the main?
Yeah, yeah.
Did we make any chance, and this just popped in my head, ask them about buying the old machine? Do they do that?
Um, there was, going back to the beginning of December. There's one company that gives us five hundred dollars for taking the machine that we have. Trying to remember.
It's pretty good or something. It's outdated.
Yeah, exactly.
It's slightly bad.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I can't remember what the other two do.
Well, actually, I think that waiting so that, because I didn't see this until I sat down here. So I made the idea of waiting so we could move over these.
Right.
Maybe table it until next month. Since we do have that one working quite well right now, that's what I heard earlier today too.
I think we definitely need to absorb this, but also take into consideration, we need a backup plan too in case something goes wrong. And maybe just having another one, but updating that machine also too, the smaller one.
Right, and it's a possibility to take.
Take a look at it into my office and so.
To take the one, our main one that we're using now and move it in front of, you know, Carol and Jody's office where that other one is the same, but yet it doesn't work very good. And getting rid of that one.
And keep this one?
And keep this one.
That's a good idea.
So then we have a really good one as our backup.
Yeah, just so that we're not down if we had to break down something.
The whole reason we started looking into this is that the panel itself was going out. And we already know that's going to be a very expensive fix. So if it goes out.
As our main one right now, you mean?
If it was kept.
As our backup?
Yeah.
Well, it would be our backup. If it goes out, then.
Get another backup.
Yeah.
Basically just running it to the ground till that happens and then get a backup.
And that's what we're doing to the one that's outside of our office. It's on its last, I'm going to say toe because it only copies one sheet at a time now.
But I think what Jody's thinking ahead is if we move that one over there, you use it for a couple of months, it blows. You could have got five hundred dollars for it before.
Well, I'm just thinking if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Yeah. That one has a scanning capability, but I don't know if that could still happen over there or.
I don't know that either right now.
Now, those type of machines, like that big one, they have actual ink cartridges or how is the ink?
It's toner.
It's toner, you just pour it. Oh, okay.
They all scan in color. So if I was to scan a colored document like this and send it by email or fax again, they would get it in color. Right now, they would get it in black and white. And they all do that. So that's really nice, an option.
Because I was just thinking, I've got a brother printer at home. I mean, it's a decent machine for the price, but I don't like the idea of the cartridges. If one is low, it won't work at all. You know, if your black is low, it won't print anything. If the red is low, it won't print anything. So it's, you know, something like that. I didn't know how those worked if you just poured.
Yeah, it's totally different.
Yeah.
We have our, the big printer that's colored is like that.
Because you have to use cartridges.
Thanks, Jeanette. All the prices include to purchase or to be on the lease, and they've got, you know, a couple of different options there.
I'll make a motion to table the cap here till we get a more accurate count of usage next month.
Support. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Are there questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Jeanette. Reschedule policy manual workshop. Letter B.
Steve and I were actually talking about this. There's been a few things that have come up that have said we need to have that in our policy manual, and one of them.
They're related to the, I had discussed in the last board meeting, which was, oh, I don't, you know. Which was the issue of pay for where township all closes for safety, welfare reasons and so forth, and how to handle that issue. But there were also a number of other issues that we want to get over.
So we're not ready to reschedule the meeting yet then?
Well, that part has to be written.
Okay.
You know, what we need to do there, and there was a couple of other things that have come up in meetings that we need to.
That's fine.
So we can either reschedule it or we can wait another month and advise Steve to go ahead and write something on, on the closing of the building. When it's health, safety, welfare.
But that's, my thought is, is kind of, this is a living document. They're going to change all of them anyways, so to be done with it, maybe go ahead and have the meeting and we can add that after. I mean, this is going to go on forever.
But being the.
What you had us say right now, we might as well add it in rather than make it, and then change it right on the game. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I have some things in there that I did talk to Steve about. We didn't go over there. Each of them.
I agree with him, it changes as it goes along, but we already know there's a change existing right now.
But these are new issues that we know need to be in there, so. What's everybody's wishes?
No, my wish is with no.
You're going to need a attorney job here for another month?
I don't know. Well, as clerk Keith indicated, if the board wants to set a date for a special meeting, whether it's toward the end of this month or sometime during February.
End of this month is shot, so I think we should just revisit it at the next board meeting myself. That would be my recommendation.
You're saying wait till the next February to make that?
End of the month is not an option. Everybody will be gone.
Oh, you'll be gone.
Okay, I'll be gone. Anyone else want?
No.
Okay, I'll be gone.
I will too.
You'll wait?
During three days only.
Yes.
So we're at Camp February?
Yes, if you'd like to set a date in February so it doesn't have to return on the agenda, that could certainly take place.
For me, it's easier to wait.
So that's my question.
I don't have my schedule looking for that, but it's up to you guys if you.
Well, our meeting is the second anyways. We have our second, so it doesn't matter.
Make a motion that we table the rescheduling of the policy manual workshop.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Churchy. Are there questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. New business. DPW lawnmower repair request.
I had submitted a letter to the board before we left for holiday. Basically stating that one of our oldest lawnmower companies, one of the X marks, is, it's just getting tired. Last couple of years, it's been using a lot of oil. This past year it was really bad. We had to keep adding oil every week. And now it's starting to cause a power problem. This mower is fifteen years old. It was the first one that we ever purchased. It's been a very good unit to us. We've had to do minor maintenance and parts replacement to it in that fifteen years. Doing a little research, a new mower to replace what we currently have is still around eight thousand dollars at the government bid price. We can replace that mower complete with a brand-new mower for twenty-three hundred. My recommendation is since the rest of the mower is in such good shape, that we just replace the mower, the motor on this mower to get a few more years out of it.
It's been a twenty-three versus eight?
Correct. I see no reason why we can't get at least another five to six years out of this unit.
Oh, it just says six to seven.
I, you know, I'm all part of it. I mean, fifteen years on a commercial mower for how much grass cut with that? I mean, it gets used.
How's our warranty with that versus the new?
The, I believe the new motor comes with a two-year warranty. That's right from the manufacturer. I think a new mower, a new mower complete, I don't even think you get two years. I think you only get a year.
Last year I got one year and a zero tip.
And that, we would only be, basically the only cost would be for the mower itself. We would do all the change in-house at the shop.
And I'd just like to remind everyone that this is not coming, this wouldn't come out of the DPW funds. This would come out of the general fund. So with that said, I make a motion that we approve the replace, replacement engine at a cost of twenty-three hundred dollars. And that is coming from the general fund.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Are there questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Seems kind of strange to be talking about grass cutting this time of year.
I think that's pretty good, get fifteen years out of that, one of the first much cuttings that's done. But next one, letter B. DPW watershed membership request.
We were sent a letter from Clint River Watershed Council for our two thousand and fifteen membership dues. We've been a part of this council for a number of years. They have a lot of different activities that they do in and about the region to enhance water quality. You know, years ago, one of the reasons we joined this council was because the EPA implemented a watershed plan. Each community had to develop one. We did that. We started on that process after a couple, three years, I believe it was. We became exempt from it, but we did continue because it did affect our area and region belonging to this council. I would recommend that we continue supporting this because it does benefit our area. And then of course, if things ever do change, where we have to be permitted again for the watershed. We're still up to date with all the activities and we can kind of pick up where we left off. Now this, I know this was listed on the agenda as DPW watershed. Actually, this is another township because it has to do with the outfalls of the properties, all the different properties. It has really nothing to do with the water system.
Is there a cost for it?
It's five hundred dollars.
Okay. I make the motion that we continue our membership in the Clint River Watershed Council for the five hundred dollars. Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Are there questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Letter C. DPW Operators' Day Workshop Request.
Again, it's that time of the year, every February, the DEQ hosts what they call Operators' Day right downtown Lansing. It's a two-day event where you can go and take classes and workshops to gain CECs in water and wastewater utilities. This year, since Wes had gained his certification, I'm asking approval for both of us to go both days. We would be commuting back and forth, so it would really be just the cost of fuel in the past. I've probably gone to this, this different thing for at least the last ten years. You know, not only are the workshops and the lectures great because you get a wide variety of speakers from all different sectors. But there's also the expo setup where a lot of the manufacturers bring new technologies and equipment that has become available or is being used in the fields.
Tim, do you know what the cost for a hotel room would be? I mean, I'm trying to think of if it's more beneficial instead of the gas back and forth to Lansing two days in your time and safety. Because beginning of February, we may have massive snowstorms. Yeah, you're going to be in Lansing, so Jody's going to have to shovel the snow, but. Yeah, you're gonna be in Lansing, so, so Jody's gonna have to shovel the snow, but.
And that's one of the reasons.
I'm just thinking.
Honestly, that's one of the reasons why we do commute. It's happened more than a couple of times where we've come in, floodlots, and then taken off, gone to Lansing. I imagine, I mean, I imagine you'd probably look in somewhere around $100 to $100 and a quarter a night. Probably a safe estimate.
Yeah.
So.
You want an unlimited option available based on weather conditions?
Yeah, but is he gonna be able to get a room at the last minute if, you know?
Okay, but is this a full day or they both do a half-days?
No, they're really only half-days. I mean, we're usually done by June, 1 o'clock in, yeah, middle of February. There's not a lot going on down in Lansing.
This has, lunch has had a lot of thirty, both days, so.
Yeah, we usually don't eat the lunch there.
Yeah. We could be on the road on the way back here by, by noon.
It's, it smells good. No, usually we, because they, because they have such a large, large group of people, they stage, you know, so. It could be, you know, Wes could be in a totally different room than I am during the lectures. He'll get the same, the same speakers, but they might be in a totally different room. His lunch may be different time than mine, and I, I tried to eat it the first year and we usually just grab something on the road, to be honest with you.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Cam and Wes for $380, $190 for each of them for the two-day workshop in Lansing. And remember to bring receipts from your lunch, and thank you for your lunch.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Ottenbacher, supported by Clerk Keith. Other discussion?
I'd just like to say that if we get, like, an ice storm, 69, you don't want to be on 69, that's how, where I told my jeep, when it was three weeks old when I was going to Lansing. If you're there and you get a massive ice storm, you must find a room. It's not worth driving 69.
It really is not.
So, so just, yeah.
If, if push comes to shove, we'll make arrangements that fits the situation.
We've got enough landscape companies around here, and I know a couple of guys with the wood trucks will take care of the snow around here if we have to, but for your safety, if we get, get a, a ice storm, know that I feel you should be able to stay.
Well, just to, we also have, Patrick is an option too, right? If we had to call him some other?
Yeah, if we get, I mean, if we get in the bind, he calls me. Or, you know, like I said, probably the last 10 years, we've only had to take care of lots twice before we left. Or it was only one year where the roads were, were kind of bad, but by the time we were done and on our way home, you know, it was pretty much cleared. So, you know, we're just gonna read the situation, see what happens, and we'll make the call.
I have access to two plow trucks, so if we have to, we're getting emergency coverage, so.
Okay.
I'd rather see you home safe and sound.
Other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter D, border review training and appointment of alternate.
Can I talk about the appointment before the training?
Yeah, I guess for the improvement, approval of the training to be included. That went out last meeting, I believe, for anybody who wanted to become an alternate for the border review. I received one earlier in the month, I had that person updated again today to include years of residence, and that it was specific for the alternate position because they just put border review. I only received one. I don't know if anybody else received anything, just as a.
I haven't received yet a reply yet, I had someone I was trying to contact, but I haven't heard back from them. You know, I haven't been able to reach them, so I don't know. I don't know if you want to wait or, but you gotta get the, you gotta get the training done, so.
Correct.
Oh, the deadline.
They know that we're gonna be sending employees there to be trained, but they just don't know the exact number of how many.
Yep.
And they say we can bring in a check by the end of the week.
So, person that I did apply is Marnie Ikis. Does have real estate knowledge and property value knowledge. The other gentleman we appointed the last time too had the same thing, and he's worked out very well. So I'd like to appoint her as an alternate, if the Board so pleases.
We were trying to get someone from the northern part of the community, but nobody's been interested.
That's where this person's from, like I say, I have the holidays and everything, I just lost track of time.
Well, there was two alternates to the border review, and we still needed one more for the, it's on border appeals. So, we can still go out and try to get the other, you know, other people too that would like to.
Yeah, that'll help. He's very far, he's at the northern border, so. That would cover the north end then.
I make a motion to appoint Marnie Ikis, 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 as a alternate for the border review.
Marnie Ikis.
I hacked that.
Let's read the idea. Marnie's been in the township most of her life, she knows very well.
Support. Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was in charge of the audience.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, I will notify her. That being said, training is $40 a person for the three members, the recording secretary, the secretary, and the one alternate, total cost of $230. It's only $30 for the secretary, which would be Christine, and $40 for everybody else.
Only issue, actually, two issues, and I may be wrong on this, I don't know exactly how all this works. As far as Christine, she works for a company that we contract with, she's not one of our employees. I don't want to comfortable paying for somebody else's employee to go to this training. Granted, it's only $30, but then you're opening up a whole can of worms, where does that end? As far as I'm concerned, if they want her, their employee, trained, they can pay for that. And it is only $30, but once you start that, it's, you know, never-ending, potentially could be. The other one is for the recording secretary. I don't know exactly what this training is, but the recording secretary is someone that takes notes, doesn't give input, doesn't have a vote, so I don't understand why we would send the recording secretary there. Not only do we have to pay the $40, but we have to pay the, what, I don't know, 11 classes, but if it's an eight-hour, we're paying eight hours on a Friday. So, I mean, if I'm wrong on that.
It's not eight hours.
Whatever, however many hours it is, that's what the pay would be, and it's a recording secretary, she takes notes. It's not, the training, I'm assuming it's not part of her job.
But when you're writing the notes down, then if they go to, to the tribunal, it's my notes that they're gonna be looking at.
I would highly recommend.
And if I don't put something down.
Writing down what they're saying. I, I, I could be wrong, I mean, if it's, if we all feel that it's training, it's just, you know, like, it's the cost of it and the hours of.
Yeah.
I'm wrong, we're wrong, I'd highly recommend her to go.
They approve your minutes, right?
I'm sorry, what?
The border review, they approve your minutes after the written? And as for the secretary, I have to agree with Chris, because we've, and we've actually done this. Steve at Penbridge goes to stuff, and he gets, it's not all from us. Some of his training gets paid for from the other communities that he uses, and I actually talked to the code enforcement officer about the same thing because he is now working for another community. And I said, you know, we're, we're paying for this this time, but next time, it really should be a joint venture. It's not something that we should be paying for, and they're contracted here, and we are not the only community that she works in.
Well, she don't invite me today to put her name down, so I'm just giving it all to you.
Right.
I agree with Chris, though, just the actual members of the border review should attend.
The secretary has taken notes before this, and it's not, this training is how to deal with the border review.
It's not how to take notes.
I've asked questions about taking notes at the last class that I went to about three years ago, four years ago.
I make a motion to approve the, sorry, that's right. Macomb Assessors Organization's Border Review Training. It's a four-hour training. I still feel pretty strong, so I'm gonna say the three board members and the alternates. For a total cost of, did we have one alternate, you said?
Yeah, $160.
The cost of $160.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Macomb County Department of Roads General Road Maintenance Agreement.
Yeah, we, we skipped one.
You missed one.
Assessing.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We were talking about assessing, I thought we had you there. Assessing Department Assessment Change Notice Nailing Request. Apologize for that.
I believe Tom already talked to Karen and Jody today, and it's pretty self-explanatory in his letter that his recommendation is KCI.
KCI. Any questions?
They have used this company the last two years now.
And it's worked well.
Yep, I asked if they had any problems or any issues, and they said none at all.
The only thing I would like to see is that they bring this stuff out at once, the printing for the year. Because he was just with, you know, he just brought all this stuff to me, or us, what was it, last month or the month before?
Last month.
And he knows he's gonna need it, so. It just seems, and it's always at the last minute because he knows he needs it, and he needs to get the stuff out, so. I had said to him I'd actually like to see him do like a two or three-year, something.
Would you want him to average an amount, up to a certain amount for a three-year period? Is that what you'd like to see?
I would like him to go and find that out, because that's what, I, I talked to him about it.
Or just ask them for a three-year?
Something.
Just see if he can get a three-year quote.
And I did already talk to him about that. Okay, everything is always estimated, so. I don't know that I want to put an amount in here.
Yes, or no?
Make a motion that we approve the use of KCI for the 2015 Assessment Change Notices at a cost of $475.64, and then estimated postage.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Letter F, Macomb County Department of Roads General Road Maintenance Agreement. Attorney Jopik, you had a review on this, I believe, correct?
Yes, I did, if I may, Mr. Supervisor.
May I, sir? Thank you.
Yes, I provided a draft resolution for Township Board to consider in this regard. The resolution is basically along the lines of the form that was provided by the county for these purposes, and it empowers the DPW Director or Supervisor to sign any applications that are needed for permits to do work in the right-of-way for things such as sewer taps and whatnot that take place in the right-of-way. It's a blanket application, so that each time the administration doesn't have to come back to the Board or wait for a board meeting in order to do anything from emergencies to routine maintenance and activities in the county right-of-way. It does include an indemnification and hold harmless sentence in Telegraph II, which to me seems reasonable. The resolution also requires the township to notify the county of contractors that are authorized to do work on behalf of the township, usually that's as part of the permitting process.
Do you see any problem with us signing this?
I do.
Your recommendation is to sign.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I'm pretty sure this would be 2016-1.
Oh, the resolution number? I'm not certain of that, but I don't. Oh, Karen?
Oh, did I say 16? Yes, okay, 2015-1. I make a motion that we approve the blanket permit for general road maintenance with the Macomb County Department of Roads Resolution 2015-1.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other discussion?
Just change the, change 14 to 15 too, in the actual resolution.
Other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Reschedule CDBG grant fund public hearing. Troy?
Mr. Supervisor, following your last meeting, I attended on behalf of the township, the, I guess, every three-year meeting now with the community service agency that now oversees the CDBG funds for Lennox Township on behalf of the community. At that meeting, we discussed the use of CDBG funds, and the CDBG program has undergone a bit of a transition with a new director in that role, and the new director seems to have reinterpreted some of the rules with regards to the use of those funds, probably making them significantly stricter than they've been in years past with regards to what you can use them for, and as you know, in years past, there was only a very limited number of things we could use the dollars for. Generally speaking, we have agreement that they will allow us to use your $90,000 in funds to complete the payoff of the EMS building on Grashad Avenue. That will cost about $38,000 to finish that payoff. They'll also let you use the funds 15. They'll also let you use the funds, 15% of them, maybe just a little bit more than that, but usually 15% is about the target number, to offset the cost for three years of your senior program. So that's about $15,000, give or take, that you can use for that. After that, programs that don't benefit 100%, those target-focused kind of groups for the use of CDBG funds, we're finding that the county is saying no to. And so, we had proposed a project where the, some of the remaining funds might have been used for the planning and architecture of a potential new headquarters for the EMS and storage facility for our community transit buses. And the response we received, and I actually have a written response from where that I can share with the Board, was that because a non-handicapped person can ride our buses, and SMART requires that, by the way, because it's our public transit funds, we can't use any CDBG funds for that project. We had suggested that maybe we could use a portion of the CDBG funds for the bus garage, i.e. headquarters, and then put in a portion of our own money, and we're told, no. And I have, like I said, I have a letter that specifically says, no. So, we've bounced a few other ideas off them, to which we haven't had much greater success at this point in time. I do have, without getting into the weeds, I do have a couple other suggestions for the Board, and have asked to meet with both Mr. Tromley and Clerk Keith during our regular EMS committee meeting scheduled for January 15th, to discuss some of those ideas. I'm gonna also, hopefully before that meeting, get a response from the county as to whether or not any of those ideas that the township could use those monies for. I'm not talking about using the, I don't think there's anything that EMS could do that could qualify at this point. So these would be all ideas that we'd be able to use that money for, that the township can use that money for, maybe out in the park or something of that nature, to use that basically remaining, you know, $38,000 or so in funds, in funds that you'll have. I'll try to have an answer for those ideas that I have at that meeting. I'll suggest those to you and see if we get an idea of what direction you'd like to go forward in, at your, at your public hearing. As you know, the public hearing hadn't been scheduled for tonight, but I think we met on a Monday. On a Tuesday, I attended that meeting with the county, and on Tuesday afternoon, I was here in the office saying to both, you know, Jody and Ron, "We need to cancel the public hearing, because we don't have a project at this point in time, you know, that qualifies, and we're gonna need some time to do that." Then with the holidays, both here at the township and at the county level, there's been some delay in getting responses back. So I think putting it off was a good decision. I think we can, I believe, as much as I painted some doom and gloom in the picture, I believe we can find a project that we can do in Lennox Township and that we will not have to give that money back, and that is my absolute intent, is to find that niche project. But what I'm, what I'm suggesting to the Board tonight is that you fully and thoroughly understand that the project focus and scope is going to be incredibly narrow. Don't, don't put on this idea that you have all these grand ideas about what you can spend this grand money on, frankly, you are not going to be able to do it.
How long can we actually put off the public hearings?
What's that?
How long? How long can we put off?
Well, they would like to have, they would like to have the answers back by the very first part of March for this, so we really have to have the public hearing at your February meeting, or you could schedule a special meeting to just have a public hearing on CDBG funds, you know, sometime later in February, if that became necessary. We did ask the question about, they're always saying they want the certified minutes by, I think it's the 2nd of March deadline. I talked, I called and spoke with Carrie Fortune down at the, at the CDBG office, and she said, with the understanding of kind of the new, more stringent rules and communities having to go back and kind of reassess, that if they don't have an approved set of minutes on March the 2nd, a draft set of minutes would be acceptable, because you might have to, you know, not be able to approve a set of minutes to your March meeting, if you will. So that's about the only wiggle room they afforded us at this point.
I was hoping that maybe we could postpone it until the March meeting, so that we could have our meeting with you on the 15th and be able to...
Certainly, why don't we meet on the 15th, discuss some of those ideas, and then after that, I can certainly call, you know, down there again and say, "The Board would really like to put this off till March," and, you know, if that's, if that's kind of the direction we'd like to go. I mean, at this point, all they can do is say no. And if they do, I guess the question would be, if we decided that on the 15th and I talked to them on the 16th, does that, I don't know what the publication deadlines are for your public hearing. You know, you have to have two weeks, I'm not sure the answer to that, at that point. So I don't know if you wanna put it on the February meeting agenda at this point. I guess I would defer that to you, not knowing what the, what the notice requirements are. So if you schedule it tonight, then we know we can have it on the, at the next regular meeting. And I don't know if we couldn't put it on tonight, schedule it, and if we really get that by, then cancel it again if we should. And then I would maybe defer to Mr. Joppik to let us know if we could, you know, if we could do that. At least we have a date scheduled.
And what he said, once it's published, then we have to go through with it. Until then, we can, you know...
One exception to that is if you publish it, and before the meeting, there's time to get a subsequent publish, publishing of a cancellation of the public hearing. So, but under the circumstances we had, it wasn't even published yet, so we didn't even go to that. But here, if we publish, and as long as there's enough time to get a second publication canceling it, if that becomes necessary, then you don't have to hold the public hearing. But it sounds like there might not be...
It's gonna be real tight.
It's gonna be real, real tight.
Is the problem, so. And, and the county seems to be very busy right now. There's only two people in that office, and with the significant changes they've made, I think they are way behind, so part of our problem is getting answers from them right now. I've had situations where I've phoned in, emailed, and we get an answer, but it's a couple of weeks after you ask the question. That's, that's part of the other problem we're running into right now.
I just read an article in the paper, didn't, like, New Haven use all their funds for park improvements?
Those, those were, I, I don't wanna speak for New Haven, but I think some of those were older funds. It's kind of like our station number three, because they had, that project was already going on. You know, they have made some allowance or given some consideration for those, for those issues to finish out projects, because the project's been, you know, a number of years and going on. Basically, the project's coming under this new, more intense scrutiny, or the new applications.
Attorney Joppik?
Mr. Supervisor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Please. I'm not familiar with the application materials and process that the county's established now, and any new rules that they have. Have they indicated that, that the Board is required to schedule the public hearing? Or is it open to, as some communities do, public hearings are scheduled by the supervisor or the clerk, as the case may be, even special meetings in some instances?
Oh, I see. So is the Board required to set the public hearing date? I don't believe so. I'd wanna look, but I don't, I don't know that there's anything that says the Board has to set the date for the public hearing. I mean, I know the Board has to have the public here, you know, the public hearing has to come before this body, but who has the authority to set that date? I don't have an answer.
What would be your recommendation, Attorney Joppik?
Well, my recommendation is, you know, provided we double-check that, that the, perhaps the Board can indicate that it reschedules the public hearing for the, to be published for the first meeting in February, or for any subsequent date, provided the rules allow a date determined by the supervisor or clerk.
Covers it all?
Yes.
I can't imagine that would hurt as a form of a motion, and that way we at least have a date on the books and we can work with that, you know, if we need to.
Gives us the option.
And it gives us the option, the only thing is, for publication, we're, if we're waiting until the meeting on the 15th, pushing it off close. So then the rules would be, how long does it work?
Is that publication specific?
Then it needs to be published, because we could do the Macomb Daily if we had to.
That's, that's my question, is it specific, how it has to be publicized?
I would imagine that, being that these involve federal companies and whatnot, that there is a timing requirement and certain verbiage that has to be included in it.
I know there is verbiage as to timing, I suspect there's something there, but, but I'm not certain if that's two weeks or... I don't think it's any more than two weeks of publications is required, so I'd have to look back at my notes on that.
I mean, does it have to be specific to any publication? That's what I'm...
Usually, most public notification requirements are to a publication that is published throughout the entire community, available for everybody in the community. So if you have a publication that only serves part of the community, that's not good enough. It has to be one that...
Serves all?
Yeah. The Macomb Daily, for example, definitely.
The Voice is what we use, and then we use the, but we have, the Macomb Daily is an alternate.
Why can't we set the, the public hearings for the February meeting? Doesn't necessarily mean we're making a decision that day.
That too is true, actually. Now that you say that, Karen, that's actually a great idea, because there are communities, now that you say that, Ray, for instance, holds their public hearing, generally speaking, I'll just use that as an example, because I've been there for theirs. They hold their public hearing, and they actually don't make a decision until a subsequent meeting. They just hear, they just hear the projects from the public. So they can hold the public hearing, and then set a special meeting if we really need to have to, and you don't have to select them from projects for your public hearing. In other words, you can, you can then, you have the public hearing, so the public can speak, so the ideas can be brought forward, and then if none of the ideas are acceptable, you could still have a special board meeting a week or two later and, and select a project of your own choosing to move forward.
Attorney Joppik?
Only question I would have in that regard is, what if word isn't received back from the county in time for publication for the February, the first meeting in February, to know what projects are deemed to be eligible to include for that public hearing?
Well, I think we'll, I think we can get an answer back before, my, I'm willing to stay on top and I should have an answer back for some of the project ideas by the January 15th meeting. I will do, you know, I will commit to doing everything in my power to doing that. And if not, you know, we can always meet, you know, later again, late in January, to hopefully, you know, bring a project forward for the event we're expecting.
My thoughts is, the public hearing is the time to collect the information, you know, for people that... You know, we used to have, what, five, six, seven organizations come into the public hearings for that and give their presentations, so, and then we didn't decide that night before, so...
I have to say, the full motion with Attorney Joppik recommended to cover all, we can still go either way based on how the information comes in.
And I like what he said, but it just doesn't get enough time. If there's, if there's a need to have it out, publish two weeks prior, too. Because the 15th is two weeks prior, too. I make a motion that we reschedule the CGB Fund Public Hearing for the February 2nd meeting at 7:30.
Support.
Motion by, was it, that was your full motion, Clerk Keith? Okay. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. What are your healthcare coverage? Letterage. Everybody has the information?
Thanks, Jody, for putting this together, lays it, lays it out in black and white. My personal thoughts is, myself and the township can't afford the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal. The Blue Cross Blue Shield HSA does not save that much. I'm favoring the half-silver HSA. It saves the township the most, it's a flexible plan. I just thought, out of the three, that was the best one. Everybody else feels the same.
I like the half-silver, too, it also has the HSA, so those that are participating in it can put money into it if they want to. And the savings is, compared to the other two, quite substantial. I feel the same way.
Looking at the half-silver HSA, and the bottom line, it saves, just so everyone out in the audience, it saves the township almost $30,000, but it also saves the employees themselves out of pocket, what they're paying now for their insurance, and some of them, it saves them quite a bit. And looking at that, and what they have now, the bottom line was even the maximum out of pocket per family and per single was less than the half HSA than it was on the renewal. So I like the half-silver HSA.
Get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to go with the half-silver HSA plan.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turchi. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Now, Jody, I remember him saying something about we have to get notice to the employees in a certain amount of time.
Yes, Janice, would you like to speak to that, please? Thank you.
I don't do that part, Chris.
And how many days was that?
I know for, Michael needs 45 days to let the insurance know. The employees, I think it's sooner, it's longer, so I will get everything to them by the end of the week.
Yeah, I do remember him specifically saying 45.
Yeah, Jody did an email to everyone, all the employees, with what their payments will be for whichever, and I will let them know.
Yeah, and just, and that was a guesstimate, because I didn't have the guard in and the dental, you know, I didn't have everything, but I did take into account the medical itself, sorry.
I'll let everybody know by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Ameriskan Imaging Services.
We had Mr. Kolak come in and look at all of the old records that came from the old building, and in the process of talking to him, he also told us about minutes on demand and showed us. Chris actually kind of came in when he was showing it to us. All I want tonight is for everyone to take these different websites, go out and look at the Ameriskan, look at the paperwork. at the Ameriskan, look at the paperwork that he gave, what he's proposing, and this is for all minutes, back to, what was it, 1976?
63, I thought I read it somewhere.
It was everything that we already have scanned and stuff, so it was quite a bit...
1963?
63.
Oh, yeah, is it in here?
This is just for informational purposes only?
No, this would be going on the website, so anybody can go on. It's, it's public record, and it, all this stuff houses on theirs, and it's all searchable. They make it searchable, so you could look up any of the minutes, you could just plug in, I mean, you wouldn't have to do one of our names.
I understand that. Is this, are you asking for approval for this?
Not tonight, I just want you to, I want next month...
That's why I said for informational purposes only right now.
Yep, and I want you to look at it, I want the websites, I want you to go out to the websites, because I am going to be asking for approval next month. It's a total first-year investment of $850, and thereafter, it's $500, and they do it. They make it searchable, they put it in their format, and we are also getting a quote on the old, old stuff, the archive stuff, the great stuff, that nobody, you know, it's, it's history. That would be probably a big expense, so we're gonna...
By the same company?
Same company.
Is there any other companies that perform the service?
You know, we had someone come in, um...
So we have something to compare to, basically?
Long time ago, and it was like 30 grand. So, this one is always updated, it's always live, as opposed to those others that we've got.
Can they do plans?
Pretty much.
34 by 36 plans? Site plans, construction documents?
And the...
And they scan plans?
I'm sure they probably can.
We need to find out across the map. Shannon's also working, Shano Kamirovsky's working on that, okay, getting quotes on that, so I don't know if you're aware of that, so she may, you may need to talk to her about that.
No, this guy came in, it was, it was just the, the historical stuff is what we started off, and then he showed us his other product.
Yes. Actually, they've done this service for their department, too. Right, because we've already had some meetings with some people that came in and presented some basic information. I don't know.
Is this one?
You'll have to ask Shannon. Okay.
Well, this one's minutes on demand, so I just want everybody to check it out.
Okay. Thank you. No action needed at this time. Public comments? Any public comments at this time? No public comments. We're 22, closed session. Township Attorney Privilege Confidential Legal Opinion. In motion?
Mr. Speaker, roll call.
I make a motion that we go into closed session at 9:06.
Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Trustee Boyd.
Mr. Supervisor, please clear. This is for purposes of discussing two, in segment, Attorney-client Privilege Communications that are provided to the Board.
Thank you, Turchi. Deputy Clerk Rolka, please.
Turchi?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Hattenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes.
I have an open session at 9:50.
Support. Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to open session. Other discussion?
Motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Well, no, I'm not doing a motion. So, or...
Yes, well, if, if the Board would be good enough to provide a motion to authorize me to proceed with the two matters in the manner discussed in the closed session.
Support. Motion by Trustee Turchi, supported by Clerk Keith. Other discussion, Mary Lynn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
I can't see what I, 28, at 9:50?
9:50, say 9:51.
9:51. Support.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Turchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
For Karen, for Ms. Ford's...